Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's Monday, September 16th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. I believe there are no minutes to approve tonight. Okay, we'll move on to presentations and public input. We have no scheduled presentations. Does anyone wish to address the Urbana City Council?
Actually, we have a question about the agenda as item C.
Item C?
Yeah, additions to the agenda. I wanted to ask at that point, we discussed one of our resolutions being an ordinance instead of a resolution.
It's been determined that it is a resolution.
Okay, thank you.
So we're good. Thank you for noting that. There are no additions to the agenda, and I don't... Anyone wish to address the Urbana City Council?
Okay. Oh, okay. I believe you're going to read a Bike to Work Day proclamation today?
Yes.
Okay. So just in case, I just thought I'd take a couple of minutes to give a little background to that. I'm the acting chair of the Urbana Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, and I'd like to thank Mayor Marlin and all of you for 14 years of support for Bike Month and Bike to Work Day. This started in 2010, and I believe this event is one of the keys to our gold-level bike-friendly community recognition. We're one of just 34 out of 480 bike-friendly communities in the country and the only one in Illinois. At this time, about 4,000 people have viewed the station map, which has 16 stations, and it's really grown to encompass lots of communities and lots of partners. The major sponsors include MTD, Carl, and the U of I. Sarthak Prasad is very active in this, and as the U of I Bicycle Facility's chief, he also serves on BPAC. And Champagne Urbana, the Champagne County Forest Preserve District, Savoy Mohammed St. Joe, and of course, the Champagne County RPC with Gabe Lewis have all been active in organizing the activities. We also have the Park District, small businesses, the Champagne Central Partnership, which is a group of businesses in Champagne, have all pitched in funding as well as the cities. So just to let you know what's... Let the public know, the activities include you can still register for Bike to Work Day, which will get you hopefully maybe a tee-shirt, but at least some coffee and goodies at one of the stations. In Urbana, there's one at Brookins and one downtown at Main and Race. And that's Wednesday, this Wednesday, September 18th, 7:00 to 10:00. And then Thursday evening, there's free lights for both front rear end... Front lights for your bicycle at the Howling Gateway at the Alma Mater and I can vary comments, 4:00 to 7:00. And then Wednesday, Safe Routes to School will be having the walk and roll to school, which you'll probably hear more about later. So of course, all of this is great for recognition, but what it really means is a healthier and happier community, and so BPAC thanks you.
Thank you. That speaker was Audrey Ishi. That's a great segue into the proclamation for Bike to Work Day. So this is a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Urbana, Illinois. Whereas, for more than a century, the bicycle has been a utilitarian, economical, environmentally sound, and effective means of personal transportation, recreation, and fitness. And whereas, the city of Urbana, who has earned a gold-level bicycle-friendly community rating by the League of American Bicyclists, encourages the use of bicycles as a means of transportation. And whereas, the city recognizes bicyclists as legitimate roadway users entitled to legal and responsible use of all public roadways. And whereas, the city recognizes the use of bicycles as a viable mode of transportation, endeavors to promote safe and responsible bicycling, and has been incorporating facilities and infrastructure in the development and redevelopment vision of our community. And whereas, the city encourages the increased use of bicycles, benefiting all residents of Urbana by improving air quality, reducing traffic congestion and noise, increasing the use of and dependence on finite energy resources, and fostering exercise. And whereas, the city encourages all residents and visitors to ride their bicycles to work, to the store, to the park, around their neighborhood, and with friends and family to promote the personal and societal benefits achieved by bicycling. Now therefore, I, Diane Wolf-Marlin, Mayor of the city of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim September 18th as Bike to Work Day in the city of Urbana, Illinois, and we encourage everyone to go for a ride. And I'm going to give you this copy. Okay, we'll move on to council input and communication. Grace?
Thank you. I have just two things here. Hoping that we'll have a public statement from the Urbana Police Department on the mishandling of the abducted, potential attempted abduction. I'm not sure if that's in reports of officers. I see just a closed session on the agenda, but I hope that that's included somewhere as was stated last week. Then the second point about the comprehensive plan ward meetings. There's two days left of meetings this week, this Wednesday at various times, and then Thursday in the South Urbana location of St. Matthew's Church from 6:00 to 7:00. The 19th on Thursday will be Ward 6 and 7, and then also others on the 18th if people want to share there specifically. So I hope people can make it out. You can find information at the Urbana... Probably searching Imagine Urbana and looking on the city webpage to find some information about these and take a look at the draft. Thank you.
Chief Boone will be speaking during reports of officers. Any other council communication? Mary Alice?
I'm just going to expand on what Grace said. So the September 18th, there are two options. One at the Tiger Academy, which I believe is on Vine Street from 6:00 to 7:00, and then if you want to come at 7:00 to 8:00, that one is at the Urbana Free Library. Both of those are this Wednesday.
Yeah.
Some of what I was going to say has already been said about Imagine Urbana, and I was also going to share, I was not here for this closed session, with the update about the attempted abduction, but do you plan to get caught up on that and do you expect to hear that update as well? Also wanted to just highlight, we... This is an exciting weekend for the city of Urbana. We have Pygmalion and Pride Fest happening, so it's a great time to be in Urbana, and you know, it's Welcome Week. To think this is just a really, really exciting time to be part of our community and encourage people to get out and enjoy our city.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on. There are no standing committee reports. We'll move on to the report from the Committee of the Whole. James?
All right. This evening, we do not have anything on the consent agenda, so we'll move ahead to the regular agenda with first, we have a resolution number 2024-09-060R, a resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, Council 31, Local 1331.
I guess I would just ask if anyone had any questions in addition to last week, or would you like me to go ahead and present again?
Michelle, can you speak into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you like me to present again, or does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask?
Grace?
I had a question, and I would do a second. Are we okay without a second at this point?
It's been moved by the Committee of the Whole.
We have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay.
Just a quick question here, maybe general one. My understanding is we don't have an animal control warden in the city anymore? Is that right? It's just in there from the last times?
Yes.
Or if we were to hire one?
We left that slot in there, so we have an opportunity should we decide to bring that back into the city, but correct, we do not have that as a funded position. We contract out.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi? Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Okay, next up is resolution number 2024-09-062R, a resolution approving an increase in the number of liquor licenses in the Class R and T-1 designation for Cochran and Heller incorporating doing business as Black Dog Smoke and Ale House, 201 North Broadway Avenue, Urbana, Illinois.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by James, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion?
I think Mr. Evans was too slow there.
Grace?
I just want if just we could just have final confirmation from everyone that the resolution is the right format?
Yes, the resolution is the correct format.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Alice?
Do we have an update on the hours and days they'll be open?
No, we don't.
Okay.
As soon as we hear, we'll let you know. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Very much yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes, and hopefully Monday, open until 11:00.
Well, we could see what the priorities are. That motion passes. Last item.
Last one is resolution number 2024-09-061R, a resolution authorizing an inter-fund loan from the retained risk fund to the motor fuel tax fund.
Second.
Moved by James, seconded by Mary Alice. Further discussion? Mary Alice?
Do we know when we'll hear back in terms of having to... Whether or not we will have to pay back the money?
Well, we don't know when, but we are...
Approximately timeframe.
It's an active conversation, so I'm hopeful that we'll have some substantive response by the end of the year, but it's hard to say.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. And that concludes the agenda items. There are no reports from special committees, reports of officers.
I'm just going to tee up the two items. So we have two items under reports of officers tonight. So Will Kolchowski is going to give an update on the special census, and that will be followed by a statement from the Urbana Police Chief Larry Boone, as the mayor mentioned earlier.
All right, thank you, Carol. The special census update is pretty brief. The big news is that the special census is underway, and they have sent out the first round of mailings to residents in the special census area, and residents can start taking the census. So there's a couple more rounds of mailings that'll occur in September. And then after the mailings, whoever doesn't get counted, the field representatives will go out and physically count the people. So we want to get the word out there to make sure we get as much count on the self-response to make the field representative jobs even easier for them, so we get a highest count possible. So for the next month, you'll see the city, I think, just blasting as much census stuff as anybody can reasonably handle. The kind of vice that we got from Bureau is the most successful counts is just kind of a daily thing where you just keep pushing it. So we have a pretty diversified marketing strategy. You'll see yard signs, you'll hear it on the radio, you'll see paid Facebook advertisements. We're reaching out to university and daily line. So we have broad scope of avenues that we're reaching out to, trying to get the word out there to make sure we get the count that we need. And other than that, I think we'll be asking all of our partners to help us share the message just to make sure we get it out. So for everybody out there, share it as much as you can without being obnoxious, and then share it again. So that's all I have.
And I will add, later this week, we'll have a flyer with a QR code and a map that you can share with all of your constituents, especially if you represent areas of the city that are included in the census blocks that we are going to recount. So that should be coming out later this week. And they are still hiring field representatives. So if you need a job, temporary part-time job, there are jobs available with the census. Mary Alice?
Well, that was one of my questions, which is how many field representatives are we that we have not filled out the spots?
It's hard... Will, do you have an answer to that?
So I think in the... When we first started the process, they had a big, large number of... I can't remember what it was. We haven't hit that number. Census Bureau, in talking to them, says, you know, they're not concerned, but it's always a concern, if that makes any sense. So they always want more people, and just because, you know, you can't... They don't always expect everybody to last. So we have field representatives, or they have field representatives hired. I don't know the exact number, but they always want more. So I don't know the official number as of today.
Okay, and I just wanted to say I already received my census letter in the mail. I don't know if others have, but I did pull it out. So they are making it to the households.
Wonderful. The official date for the census is October 15th. As we've mentioned, it's underway now, and they hope to conclude by the end of November. So the big push will be this fall. And I want to thank Will Kolchowski, Tarek Azeem, and Bridgette Boyhand for the extraordinary amount of work they have done on this. And we turn this over to Chief Boone and Deputy Chief Searls.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, members of council. This will be a brief, sterile version of what I reported to you all last week. Last week, you all got all the details regarding this administrative investigation with respect to the attempted abduction and our investigative efforts afterwards. So on October... I'm sorry, on August 6th of 2024, a complainant reported an attempted abduction involving her 11-year-old daughter to the Urbana Police Department. The police services representative misunderstood the call to be a vehicle accident. It did not forward it to an officer. This resulted in a delay of the investigation. Now, when I say misunderstood, it wasn't because of any language barrier or anything of that nature. Having listened to the audio, it's very clear what the complainant is saying. It wasn't due to any racial undertones of ignoring the complainant. I'm surmising it was due to doing multiple tasks at the time of the call. On August 10th of this year, an interim deputy chief was alerted to the situation via Facebook by a concerned citizen. That concerned citizen criticized UPD's response to the incident. The interim deputy chief contacted an officer who was working that day of the incident and instructed that officer to research the call log. There were no calls that was related to the incident. On August 11th of this year, I, Chief Boone, and Deputy Chief Searls were informed of the Facebook post. Chief Searls, who was out of town at the time, forward the information to the interim deputy chief, who took over the investigation. The interim deputy chief took several steps on August 12th of this year, including checking with all police services reps and contacting the school resource officer. The school resource officer also reached out to the school administration at Urbana Middle School for information regarding the incident that also yielded no additional information. By August 13th of this year, it was discovered that a school rep had also received a very vague report from a citizen regarding the incident, but the details were unclear and follow-up attempts were unsuccessful. The interim deputy chief investigation included checking for similar calls and attempting to contact the reporting Facebook citizen that also yielded no results. On August 15th of this year, the interim deputy chief spoke with other police services representatives, all confirming they had no record of such a call. Despite the interim deputy chief's efforts, they could not find any supporting evidence of such a call. I want to underscore, the interim deputy chief spoke to all PSRs except the one that originally took the call on August the 6th. I also want to underscore that these police services representatives are non-sworn. Subsequently, the interim deputy chief posted on the Urbana Police Department Facebook page detailing the efforts I just highlighted to you all. However, his response were... Was unprofessional, and he also, to some degree, criticized and named the citizen who made the original Facebook post. As a result, an administrative investigation was deployed, and as such, I'll have Deputy Chief Searls speak to the outcome due to the administrative investigations with respect to policies, in addition to that, with respect to change of assignments.
Good evening. First, going to begin with a civilian employee that has briefly been discussed. That employee has been counseled on errors that were performed, specifically the supervisor discussed and reiterated what calls require an officer to respond. Supervisor discussed and reiterated active listening techniques. Supervisor discussed and reiterated proper protocol for handling emergency calls, and also discussed and reiterated proper protocol for handling calls that the call taker is unsure of how to handle. That being said, the division supervisor is going to be implementing division-wide active listening training, which includes developing training using an experienced communication training specialist that will focus on active listening and information processing techniques. They will also provide division-wide retraining on what I'm referring to as call triaging, what calls to handle, what calls to refer to a supervisor, what calls to refer to an officer, what calls to refer to MECA 911, and what to do when you're unsure with different calls. Next, the supervisor is going to develop annual training refreshers for all call takers at the Urbana Police Department, specifically on recognizing potential emergencies, active listening, and decision-making generally. Lastly, the division supervisor is going to implement an audit process for all calls that come to the front desk, where the supervisors of the division will audit various calls to see if personnel there are accurately responding to phone calls and providing good With respect to the other employee involved, that employee has been counseled and has also been told to identify and take professional coursework related to communications involving external and internal stakeholders. That employee has been directed to gather a list of all open projects, investigations, events, or other work that needs to be assigned to anyone at the rank of deputy chief, and that employee has been instructed that upon appointment of another deputy chief, that they will begin a new assignment in the patrol division.
Any other reports of officers?
I did have a couple of announcements, first of all. I wanted to let the public know that the first meeting of the Alternative Response Task Force is... Has been postponed to be October 15th, 2024. There's some additional meeting and process logistics that have to be worked out, but this was already scheduled to be the second meeting, so it's on the calendar of the entire task force. So the first meeting again will be October 15th. Next, I wanted to let folks know that today, Vollo Broadband Services and the Champagne County announced, along with the Housing Authority of Champagne County, a new initiative that will provide wireless internet to about 300 units in the Housing Authority system. The... These include units at Pinewood Place and Crystal View in Urbana, and this is a huge step forward. It's the beginning of a much larger effort to get wireless internet into Housing Authority properties. At this point, they have... Are hardwired, but they don't have wireless, which has a huge negative impact on ability to do remote learning, telehealth, and get on the internet in general. So that is a... An excellent first start, and the county ARPA money was used to fund this particular stage of the effort. And finally, as part of Welcoming Week, we're having Coffee with the Mayor and other city staff tomorrow on the South Lawn, and everyone is invited to attend between 9:00 and 11:00. And that's one of many, many, many Welcoming Week activities in the city. Thank you. All right, we have no new business. We'll move on to one mayoral appointment. And that is Catherine Holliday for a term ending June 30th, 2027. Catherine has been a resident of the extraterritorial jurisdictional area of Urbana. That's called the ETJ, which is the one and a half mile radius surrounding the city of Urbana. The establishing ordinance for the Historic Preservation Commission allowed a seat for one resident of the ETJ. So she fills that seat. Catherine's a professor of historic preservation and American architectural history at the University of Illinois. Previously, she taught at the University of Texas at Arlington. When in Texas, she was on the State Board of Review for National Register Programs for Texas Historical Commission and held a seat on the Board of Directors for Historic Fort Worth for six years. In her application, she wrote, "I am dedicated to supporting local efforts to steward the built environment and support the efforts of community members to find ways to honor the history of places we call home. Having lived in Urbana for a year now, I've been delighted to be learning a new place and see all the incredible potential for Urbana neighborhoods to contribute to a larger narrative of place as the city continues to grow and develop." So I would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Catherine Holliday to the Historic Preservation Commission for the term ending June 30th, 2027.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Discussion item is Airbnb zoning language. And...
I'm going to tee this up for Kevin if I can.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't know if you all remember, but about 18 months ago, we had come to you, and we had a list of priority items that have been sort of on the back burner for the planning division, and the first one we needed to tackle because of some, what we had hoped was urgent desire on someone's part to develop a piece of property in the B3U zone. That was the priority to pursue at the time. But another issue, sort of hard on its heels, was dealing with the way we handle short-term rentals or Airbnb and BRBO-type units in Urbana. And Kevin's going to explain a little bit about how we handle it and how we'd like to change it, but it... Right now, the system doesn't really work very well for everyone involved, and so I think we're eyeing some simplification that will actually lead to greater compliance. So that's your intro there, Kevin.
Okay, thanks, Carol. So yeah, just to open up here. So the way we've been regulating short-term rent... So the way we've been regulating short-term rentals for the past 10 years is not terribly clear or good, um, so we're really looking for direction from council on how to proceed in this matter. Um, our regulations are really rooted in what I'd call a classic conception of bed and breakfasts, um, which, which leaves some gray areas that don't really contemplate the current short-term rental landscape. Um, for example, single apartments being rented out or whole houses being rented out for the short term. Really, the only complaints that we receive for short-term rentals right now are for, uh, I'd say, someone who is breaking the rules, uh, that type of variety, but not the, people are having wild parties, or they're causing all sorts of parking problems, so, uh, not, not really nuisance complaints, it's just the, they're breaking your rules. Um, so it's really, short-term rentals are not problematic at this time. And then I just do want to say we have limited staff time, so any approach we take should be cognizant of that. For a little more background, we don't define short-term rentals in, uh, as a specific use or define them, you know, as, as a term in the zoning ordinance. Uh, we only define two subtypes of short-term rentals, those being owner-occupied bed and breakfast and bed and breakfast inns. Just real quickly, uh, bed and breakfast inns are defined as a converted, single-family, detached dwelling in which rooms are rented to transient guests on an overnight basis, and it goes on to say that a dining area open to both guests of the inn and to the public as a restaurant, and retail sales are permitted, uh, within a bed and breakfast inn if they are subordinate to the use of the inn for lodging. Um, so again, that's kind of a, a classic conception of, of bed and breakfast. Um, and then bed and breakfast owner-occupied is defined as an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling or part thereof where rooms are rented to transient guests on an overnight basis, and it says a bed and breakfast shall be subordinate to the principal use as a single-family dwelling. Um, so our current approach for short-term rentals, uh, it has been really based on an interpretation of how they fit into sort of one of those definitions, um, rather than really addressing short-term rentals directly, which is what we would like to do. Uh, so we see a few potential approaches to, uh, to how we would do this. Uh, one is business as usual, that's always an option. Uh, so we keep treating them the way we have for the past 10 years, uh, which, as I stated, is not terribly clear or good. We could continue down that path, um, but not, not to be, do a spoiler, but that's not desirable. Um, our definitions leave gray areas, they don't address all types of short-term rentals, um, so again, sort of renting out a single apartment or a single bedroom, uh, aren't really addressed in our current rules. And we also know that we don't have effective or really uniform compliance across the city. However, compliance is important. Uh, it's really the only way that we can ensure that these properties are operating safely and appropriately. Um, a second approach would be what we'd call enforcement-heavy compliance, and that would be to essentially keep treating them as we have been, but aggressively enforce against people who are, are doing short-term rentals. Uh, we know this would be problematic because the number of properties we, we think are out there, um, would, you know, would make this challenging, and we, we also think that our current regulations are overly burdensome in order to get the results we are seeking, which is really to address nuisances, um, which, again, don't really seem to be a problem. Uh, so this would sort of be making a problem where none exists, and I could see this as leading to legal challenges, for example, if someone challenges the way we've been interpreting our zoning ordinance all these years. Um, a third approach, which I'll just cut to the chase, which is what we'll recommend, but, but we will discuss this, um, is to amend the zoning ordinance to make compliance easier, and with this approach, we would amend the ordinance to address short-term rentals directly, um, and then we would fold their registration into our current rental registration program, which works and is very effective. Um, then, one feature of this approach that we really like, um, is that it would make it easier for property owners to comply with, and it wouldn't require us, um, to have a lot of staff time and really onerous enforcement requirements. So this would make our rules more explicit, more clear, it would use our existing, um, permitting system that we have set up, and it would require, uh, periodic building safety inspections, which would be good, good for everybody. So if, you know, if we take this third approach and amend the zoning ordinance, um, those amendments could take, uh, maybe one of a few different forms. So we could add explicit short-term rental definitions to the zoning ordinance to sort of fill in those gaps. Um, we could amend existing definitions to be more clear and/or to fill in gaps. Um, we could also remove one or both of the existing definitions, um, that's an option too. But again, before we get too deep into that, we wanted to bring this to council to get some preliminary feedback, and we really look forward to your questions and comments. Thanks.
Chris.
Um, thanks, Kevin. Uh, on option three, I heard the, they would be folded into the registration program that we already have now. Would that include them paying in a fee like the others do?
They would, yeah, and I, I don't know the fee off the top of my head. It's not too burdensome. I think it might be 40 or 50 bucks a year, 70? Okay. Inflation.
Mary Alice.
Um, I, I like the idea of being more explicit in terms of short-term rentals, um, what that means. I assume, if I remember correctly, owner-occupied buildings, uh, so if somebody is, has, owns a duplex and they rent one side and then the other side they own, I don't believe that falls under rental registration, but I could be wrong. Um, the reason I bring this up is I know that there are people who rent out a bedroom in their house, um, and so kind of thinking about all those different ways that those short-term rentals can, um, show is going to be a little challenging. Um, one, just because my, my neighborhood is always talking about parking, I would ask, um, for parking to be addressed in any kind of short-term rentals to be explicit in terms of what the neighborhood, neighbors can expect.
You, you know I love talking about parking as well, so we will surely address that.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Hello?
Hello? Go ahead.
Yeah. Um, ah, could you define again, short-term rental?
Uh, I don't think we've actually defined short-term rental. Um, the way we've been kind of treating it is anything that's 30 days or less, um, and I believe that's because we have, uh, certain building safety, um, rules that, um, that call anything longer than 30 days sort of a, a long-term or permanent thing, and anything less than that is transient, uh, but I'm not a building safety expert.
I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of, because basically of my recent experiences, um, that there may be times when a person or person needs to be in the area for more than 30 days, and if, um, if that per, if the person renting out the Airbnb would be allowed to, to, uh, accommodate that.
Yeah, and we, we might need, or we'd need to probably figure that out, but currently, anything more than 30 days just falls under our rental registration program. Um, so you could do that, but also, you know, there's sort of that gray area of, well, if you're doing it for less than that, then what do you fall under? So that's what we're trying to address here.
Uh, uh, well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking in terms of somebody from out of town that may have to be here for medical procedures or so, and that, that would, um, if their, if their families or whatever wanted to be more supportive of them, uh, if they would be able to stay for longer than, than, than a short-term time, you know, this would be less than 30 days, if they, if they needed to be there more than 30 days.
Yeah, I think if I get, get where you're going with that, I, I don't think we'd set anything up that would, um, exclude longer, you know, if you're renting something through one of these platforms online, who, I don't think we'd put anything in there that would say you can't do it for longer than 30 days, uh, but that's something we can, we can figure out.
Okay.
James.
So, help me out a little bit here. What's the distinction between a short-term rental and a hotel that has a weekly rate for a suite?
I don't think we know that, or we don't.
There's one important difference. We get a, a tax.
Sure.
For the hotel, when we call it a hotel.
And we, well, we do get paid from short-term rental companies currently. We, we don't, it's, it's not like we don't get anything from them, but we don't, we're trying to figure out the zoning part of it. I think the financial part has, has been figured out.
We get an equivalent.
I'm not sure if it's equivalent.
I think our finance director can answer that.
We, we did amend the code as it pertains to hotel motel tax, I don't remember how many years ago, I think before this council, to make sure that we were including Airbnb and similar kinds of what we call in that section of the code, um, facilitators.
Okay, so they, they, they know that if they rent in the city of Urbana, they have to pay us.
They have to pay, yes.
Okay. Um, the other question I have is, um, I seem to recall that there were some short-term rentals, um, in the Stone Creek area that were not following, uh, our rules in some way, and were asked to stop doing what they were doing. How does that, how is that different from what we're looking to do here? Was the, was the zoning, were they in a place where they couldn't do that for zoning reasons?
Well, yeah, so based on...
Help me remember what was going on.
Yeah, right, right. So based on the interpretation that we've been using for the past 10 years or so, um, you can't rent out an entire house, because that's, that's most like a bed and breakfast inn, even though I think there's some gray area there. Um, so essentially, the, we said you can't rent, rent out a whole house for, you know, for less than 31 days, and that's, that's where they ran afoul of the way we've been doing things.
So what's the difference between a whole house and half a duplex, then?
Well, I, I don't think under our current definitions, we address the half a duplex thing, because if you're an owner-occupied, it says, "single family," and a duplex is not a single family. So that's one of those gray areas that our, our current definitions don't deal with.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Grace.
Uh, thanks for bringing this up as a discussion for some direction. I agree with your general recommendation of option three of doing something to amend the ordinance, and, um, I'll look forward to, I imagine, some options you'll throw at us when you bring it back on a more kind of official basis. I am also curious about the tax part, maybe for another longer conversation, maybe just laying out a little more background about how that works, and like, is it paid directly through the company, like Airbnb? Okay, but yeah, I think just a little more background on that. Um, I think it makes sense putting it in with the other rental registration, um, and yeah, I'm curious to see how it would work in what zones, too, if that's, I imagine, another layer of what you'd be proposing, proposing is permitted special, conditional, other kinds of uses in different zones. Sorry. Cool. So, thanks for bringing it up. I'll look forward to a lot more.
All right, thank you.
James.
So another, another question I have, um, something, something I have observed is, um, through Airbnb, uh, rooms to rent, um, on a short-term basis, that the advertisement for the room, this is proximate to campus, so in the State Street areas, um, but in the advertisement for the room, it indicates that there's an opportunity to become a long-term rental, and so I'm wondering if any of the people doing short-term rentals are, um, lying under the radar of our rental registration program by advertising as a short-term rental, but then converting it into a semester or a academic rental.
And that is a possibility.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Jam?
I don't have a lot to add. I think, again, I like the option three approach. I've been in other cities where they have something similar, and I think it's kind of reassuring when you see the little certificate that someone has actually looked at where you're staying, um, so it seems like a, a win-win. It's exciting to see this moving, and hopefully wouldn't be too much of a burden on staff.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
If, if things occurred to you over the next few weeks, please feel free to send them to Kevin. Any ideas or questions, he'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Last item on the agenda is, um, would request a motion to go into closed session per 5ILCS 120 slash 2C1 regarding personnel.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
I'm going to give it to Jaya. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes, and for folks watching from home, uh, we'll go into closed session, and when we come out, we'll emeritately adjourn, adjourn.
We have a quorum. I would entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
I move that we come out of closed session.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Grace. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.